We have nothing on the screen.
That's way beyond.
Okay, we all set?
Not yet. I'm just gonna check, make sure Pam's recording. Once I get it, okay? Okay, and she said one minute ago she's just gonna get it, so it says we're recording right now.
Bill. I'm plugging that mine to the head of the business. You start, and why I see the wire right there.
Okay, we're recording, we're all set.
I'd like to welcome you all to the Thursday, April 11th, 2024 meeting of the Bellingham Planning Board. We're gonna move the agenda around a little bit tonight. We have a continuing. First item is a public hearing on the Warren Article. Can you bring us up to speed on this?
First of all, since we did have to advertise it, we have to have a motion to open.
I want to entertain a motion opening the public. Meeting.
A motion by Brian, seconded by Nick.
And the purpose of this public hearing is to provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on the proposed amendment, subsection 240, article six, definition 240, S32, term defined livestock raised. What's the current stance on that?
We have the health agent here that's gonna explain the current status.
Thank you.
Event zone.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, uh, the last time we spoke, um, the chairman of the board, Bill, had asked us if we had taken the opportunity to do a little bit of research. Uh, at the time, I did not, but, uh, since then, I'd have, and, um, we have come to the conclusion that, uh, we think that we can actually rewrite the regulations, and we would like to ask that these, this current, um, this current article actually be put on hold so that we can have some time to do that. Because, um, we think that, you know, upon further review of, I've looked through Blackstone's regulations, Medway, Milis, um, et cetera, and, um, we found, I found that, you know, if we rewrite it, we could clarify it, and it will make it not only easier for us to enforce from the office perspective, but, um, it will be easier for citizens to understand. It will be more beneficial for citizens, and I think that that's our best option at this, at this time.
And so essentially, they're gonna, the bylaw, that's gonna be in alignment with the regulations.
Okay, so they, they go ahead and.
Correct, and so your, your motion, if you're comfortable with that, would be to close the hearing and to take no action, or unless you wanna do something different. But that's basically what they're doing is to align the bylaw with the regulations at a later date.
Whatever we're trying to do is, um, pass over.
Okay, so you can make a motion to close. Sure, first.
But before we do that, we need a motion, um, to close, uh, the public hearing. Do we need to?
We do need to have a motion to close in a second.
Do we need to hear from the public?
Um, essentially, you're not taking any action, so it's, it's off. They, they don't want you to have that, they're asking for you not to.
I would entertain a, a motion to close the public hearing, so on the Warren Article for livestock.
Have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Dennis, aye.
Brian, aye.
Bill, aye.
Bill, aye.
Nick, aye.
Bill, that motion passes.
In the motion.
I'll terminate a motion to pass over in the Warren Article. So there's no action taken.
Second.
A, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Dennis, aye.
Brian, aye.
Bill, aye?
Bill, aye.
Nick, aye.
That motion passes, and that's.
A letter will be sent to the SLU board tomorrow indicating their request to have it be not held.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you. Have a nice evening. Uh, the next two items are, uh, continue public hearing on 306 Maple Street with regards to the scenic row and 306 Maple Street.
Okay, so we, um, need a motion to open the hearing?
I entertain a motion to open the, uh, reopen the public hearing along 306 Maple Street and 306 Maple Street, scenic row apartment.
Second, red.
Any discussion? Call for the vote to reopen the public hearing?
Dennis, aye.
Brian, aye.
Bill, aye?
Bill, aye.
Nick, aye.
That motion passes, and then we're.
And a motion to continue until April 25th.
Okay, it's gonna be a busy night.
It's gonna be a busy meeting.
I entertain a motion to continue until 25th.
Sub move.
Have a second.
Against Nick.
We have a motion made by Brian, seconded by Nick. We need discussion of the motion to continue until April 25th. All in favor?
Dennis, aye.
Brian, aye.
Bill, aye?
Bill, aye.
Nick, aye.
Uh, then the next item is going to be the side presentation on 206 Mechanic Street. I think you'll need access to our.
Yeah, I might just forego my computer and use my printouts.
Fine.
Unless you want me to plug in.
No.
Try, okay. Sorry about that. And so I wanted to start with, um, some new blue colors.
Okay.
For you guys to check out. Um, I've got our top three here. Well, this is the no, if you wanted to compare.
Seems like we should have done this during March Madness.
Yep.
Is there any way you can share screen it so the public can see?
Yes, okay, that would be great. I, I only have, um, sorry, I could, Sherwin-Williams only. Let me see if I can plug in. That would be great.
Why, you added that, what we were checking?
This was the original.
Oh, yeah, do you want to see the honorable blue?
Yeah, these are all the same.
Those are all the same, yes, just three copies.
Yeah, thanks, though. That was the second one that was proposed.
Well, so that was actually, um, yeah, so a recap from last meeting. That was actually the blue shown in the renderings, um, from the approved color scheme.
The, the original site.
Exactly, it's.
Twenty.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it was obviously very different in rendering form, um, than actual sample.
Okay. Can the public see the colors?
That's what she's getting.
Okay.
So I'm allowed to hit share screen? I can control it?
Did you, did you log on? It should be fine. Yep, I can let Pam know.
It says disabled participants screen sharing.
Did you log on to Zoom?
Yeah.
Let me just let him know.
What is your computer name?
Uh, Chelsea.
Oh, Chelsea. All right, I'm, I'll do that right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can you see that?
That's great.
Yep. Okay. So the three bottom colors are, uh, from the original color scheme. This is sort of the, the main building color, right? The textured cream, the dark accents, and then this more brown tony, um, on the verticals. And then you'll see these are the three options that we like the best. And then this is the honorable blue. So the architect took a look at these as well, um, and feels like any of these three colors that you have in front of you would work well with the color scheme.
Okay. What I'd like to do for a moment? Just so the audience is a part of representation.
We can put the, I can put those on the table.
You wanna pass those around?
I can, yep, I'll give them time, sure.
Yeah, the colors that are on the screen right now aren't.
Well, that's.
I'm sure they do, but they don't represent it. That's why we don't represent them. It doesn't look like that.
No.
No.
That's why she was good enough to get samples for everybody to see it in real life.
I cleaned out the sample section.
Yes.
I'm Sherwin-Williams.
So for clarity, is the, the beige color, the base color, um, gonna stay, and then the two accents are gonna change?
Um, so these three on the bottom here will remain. It was just the blue in question.
What we had originally was the color you gave us a couple minutes ago. Was called honorable blue. And a little brighter than we all anticipated.
So this is the intent here, right? This would be the blue that we're talking about. This is that light textured color. You can't see it here, but the very, very dark brown is an accent all along the bottom.
Okay.
And we added it along the dock wall. Um, and then the, the brown to the far left, yeah, is, is these accents here, which is a little bit.
It's just the blue that you're trying to.
Exactly. Exactly.
Would you mind showing that to the audience?
Yes.
Thank you. Can you just describe what you just described?
Yes.
Thanks.
So this is the approved color scheme. This light color is, um, the far right. It looks very white on the screen, but it's like a creamy textured color. This is that brown, which is on the far left. And then it's hard to tell here, but this band on the bottom, which goes all around the building, is the dark brown in the middle.
And I know that the last time we were here, you showed that you wanted to change the color. Is that the color that you were pushing to change into?
Blue, right?
Blue and fuzzy.
So, so this blue, this is our approved color scheme from May of 2022, which is, um, do you have honorable blue?
I have honorable blue, there's an indigo and a salty dog.
So honorable blue is, is this.
Yeah.
It just doesn't translate in red. It's very bright in person. It doesn't translate well. So the other three, yes.
Well, I see indigo and salty, but it's, well, yeah, I'm not next to her, but I was, I do it out of colors. Indigo blue is probably my favorite color.
Then honorable. Yeah.
By mark, because you'll, that was too bright.
It was very bright. It was very bright.
It's either honorable, yeah, but it's kind of, I don't know, I think.
This was my favorite.
It's my mark, right? It's important.
Does anybody else want to speak?
Thanks for bringing us.
Yes, no problem.
Any, any other comments from the public before we discuss what we feel comfortable with?
What's the address?
Yes.
What's the address?
206 Mechanic.
Okay.
The last one that's already out.
It's the one that's unpainted right now, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
What's your favorite?
I like indigo the best. It, it looks the most muted out of all, but I bet you on pretty big building, it's still gonna look for it. This would be my favorite.
On the same, is that the same colors as the sign?
Uh, is the indigo the same color as that? It can be. The sign can, can match if you want.
So the plan is, we were talking last time, a gray sign with the gray. Okay, so.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking on this.
I like two colors, salty dog and, and indigo. But I can go with either of those, Tim.
Okay.
I like indigo.
Yeah, it works for me. So the consensus of the board is, um, indigo?
Perfect.
And we'll try to incorporate that in the sign?
We can match that color in the sign, yes.
Okay.
Yep. And then we can, uh, we can talk about the sign. Is it okay if we talk about the sign?
Uh, briefly, yeah, can we belong that?
Okay, yeah, so I just want you guys to know, um, so I have more printouts, nicely through the screen.
We can do that screen share also. That would be great.
Yeah.
The public.
They want to see it. Um, so I'm gonna pull up my image here. Don't, don't look at the stone color.
Mm-hmm.
I just want to show.
Maybe can you pass them?
Yes.
The public can see. They may have two more copies, see if you wanna pass them out.
I think it booted me off of the screen channel.
It, it booted me off, okay, I'm just wanting to be in, again, sure. But, um, so the first page that you have here, uh, disregard the stone color. I just want you to see the sign, the columns, and then the, the length of the wall. So it will be the 90 linear square feet. It will be rounded like its component on the other side. Um, we've kept the columns. Again, I don't think the colors of the sign translate well. It can be the, the indigo blue, and we can choose a cream, white, whatever you guys prefer. Um, but I wanted you to see this image for the design, the style. I, I think we captured everything that you asked for. We put the columns back in, we extended the wall, and we've got it sort of sitting flush within.
Okay.
So we have some of the stone samples and.
That's fine. I thank you.
Yeah. Um, so we have some stone samples.
Yeah, I mean.
We have veneers to show, um, but we wanted to talk a little bit about means and methods.
Yeah.
Because I think originally we had shown this, um, thinking it would be a veneer, getting nice crisp corners. I know you guys maybe don't want a veneer, um, so we just wanted to talk a little bit about how that might look, and then it's saying I have no internet.
I don't know where the internet went. It should be CC dot two on your, when you go to.
Um, and then I do have photos from the wall. Actually, Cliff, do you have any photos of the wall printed out? Across?
Uh, no, I had all my presentation. I had plugged into the UCI and disconnected the system.
Thank you, sir.
So the wall across, the existing wall across the street, um, okay, perfect, I'm back on. Um, is very heavy on the mortar. So there's a lot of stones, but a lot of mortar mixed in. So I don't know if that's, um, if that construction is the best to model.
I, I agree.
Okay.
I think we probably want less mortar, more stone.
Okay, perfect. So we, we had some images, but I think you guys are on the same page, so I don't think I even need to open those. Um, but we wanted to make sure that, that wasn't the look you were looking for. Um, so we, we were gonna go to the quarry our contact couldn't meet today, um, and get some natural stone samples.
Okay.
Um, to, to show, you know, physical samples that we could get, um, so we can do that another time, obviously, since we don't have the samples today. But I just wanted to make sure we were on the same page, that using like a real natural stone and having mortar mixed in may look a little different, right? Not as crisp, not as linear.
Okay. Yeah, well, I don't think we wanna replicate the mortar. I think we wanna replicate the stone color. I, I see someone in the back room talking about a lot of mortar. We'd rather have an accurate representation of the stone as opposed to additional mortar. That's just one person talking. Let me start with Nick.
Totally agree, I mean, typically, it's just, it's the mason. It's a good, if it's a good mason that's working on the stone, they can get the joints pretty tight, and that.
Yeah, I can show you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you want me to show what he's looking at?
The, the original, yeah, the original, does it, what we were trying to capture originally? It was the shape of the wall across the street and the same tone of the stone.
Correct.
So it was a square wall, uh, same stone, um, you know, the, um, the color of it, uh, you know, as far as the construction of it, you know, I think we would more so like a.
And that's hidden water. Is that on the subbase footing, uh, that stone wall?
Uh, the one across, yeah.
Or is that just on?
It, it's, it's probably not.
This one, this one's gonna be.
Tight on that cliff?
This, this one's gonna be on.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, otherwise it's gonna fall.
Exactly.
Bill?
Are you, are we gonna put up a, are you putting us a stone?
Um, it's not.
Not letting. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm agreeing with that. Um, I'm also skipping to the next, to the second page. So we're talking about the sign, um, I think the number's two of six. It's overshadowed the welcome to Bellingham's part of it. Um, I think, I'm not sure where we ended up, but last time around, we were talking about the two of six being more near the entrances.
In, in reverse, huh?
Yeah, 'cause the two of, two of six on this page with the, it's on the, the picture of the actual thing, the two of six just overshadows the welcome to Bellingham. So me, that defeats what we're trying to do here.
Yeah, I think, so, I think we had talked, so the fire department was here last time, and we thought, you know, we could need some sort of identity on the building.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I remember your concerns about having it too close to the sign. We didn't want it to take away from it. Um, the, the entrance is so far down in elevation that you're not gonna see anything if we put it, you know, right above the door, or, you know, vinyl right on the door. So I don't know if there's a way that we can keep it on the, maybe shimmy it on the corner.
Bill, would it help you if maybe I could have the applicant meet with the fire chief and meet with maybe a member of the board?
Sure.
To figure out, because we're not gonna solve it tonight.
No.
Because we wanna get the fire chief's input. Is that something, because you're gonna have to come back again anyway with the other things, so I mean, we're not gonna resolve it tonight. Is that, is that something, would you be comfortable doing that if I could set that up?
Yeah, absolutely.
With the fire chief, and you could see where he would.
The size of the, it's, it's, um, we can talk about.
We can talk about that. Well, we could, we'll, we can figure that out.
And we can also, and I apologize for all the difficulties, but we do have some photos of, of the building in its current condition, but coming up, and I, I don't think it's going to be that in your face. Um, so we can also do some mockups. We can do some sizing mockups and move them.
I think we're getting close to what we want.
Yeah.
You know, maybe we wanna move it off the, um, excuse me, I wanna use the right, the indigo blue now. And maybe put the numbers on, on the tan part or something?
Okay, I think, but.
We can have a big discuss with the chief.
Fire chief really needs to make that decision, what he's comfortable with. He might be fine. We don't know. I think it's, he's the one we wanted to recommend. We'll have him meet with you, and maybe Tim and somebody from the board.
They're flexible on that. They just, they just want it over there.
Yeah.
So they don't have.
Yeah.
No, no.
So we can figure that out before the next meeting.
Ready?
Let them know what.
We'll try, yeah, I think it'll be one topic meeting that.
Yeah, and we, listen, we're not looking to have, you know, a five foot tall 206. We just, we just need a little. Yeah, a little indicator.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay, but the last thing I wanted to ask you about was, um, we talked about painting the reveals last time.
Yes.
And I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about that. So those will be hand painted. Okay, so they have to snap the line all the way across the building and then hand paint it.
Okay.
So my concern is that since it is such a vast wall, any little, any little mishap, you're gonna see it wiggle. So the, the, the purpose of the reveals is to create a shadow on its own, right? It's not gonna be as dark as I think you probably want it to be. But I wanted to see if we could paint the building in the color scheme, leave the reveals as is. Have you guys come see it? And then have it be a, a part B if we need to.
That's fine, maybe.
Okay.
Anyone else? I don't wanna, it's not my opinion.
Actually. The reveals of the lines that go through.
Yeah, so we had talked about how in the renderings, it kind of comes through as if it's a different color.
Yeah.
You know?
I know it's something you were concerned about.
If, if there's something we can do after the fact, if it's not.
Yeah, I think we should look at it. We'll take a little field trip.
Yeah. And I'm, just while I'm talking, I'm, I'm wondering if you're bumped off of Zoom.
I have been bumped off of Zoom.
Maybe, maybe you need to, uh, the, uh, Pam needs to re-designate you to share your screen and re-logged into Zoom. So maybe that's the problem.
She's right now as a co-host.
Oh, yeah.
On her laptop, and it should work.
Me? Yep, I, I'm not, I don't even think I'm on.
I think the failed person's gonna grant it.
Okay. Perfect.
Anything else?
So, so I'll be back with stone samples.
Yeah.
And a meeting with the fire chief, yes.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try and get that done before the.
Do you wanna be on the first meeting in May? We, I don't think we can put this on for the 25th. We have, we were just slammed. Would the first meeting in May be okay?
That's fine, okay. Perfect.
That's fine. One question.
Two questions, I guess. The, the historical marker?
Yeah.
Where would that be in relation to the sign?
Are you talking about the trolley marker?
Yeah.
So the trolley marker is kind of, if you remember this image here?
Yep.
It's kind of in, next to the green sign.
Okay.
But we can, we can move it. We left it where it was.
That's up right.
It is, yeah. Yeah, so we left it, but we can.
I'm wondering, um, if there's, so the two columns uh, on either side of the welcome to Bellingham sign.
Mm-hmm.
I'm wondering if one, one side can have that marker, or maybe some other thing. Just something to consider.
You just adhered?
No, it just some, I don't know. I'm not thick, but, um, if there's rather than just have this random historical marker, strategically place it on the actual wall, so that's a permanent place.
Okay.
Uh, just a thought.
Yeah, I'll have to go back and see. I mean, I.
The wall wall is high, you know, so if, if you put that marker, it's gonna be low, but maybe it's.
It's gonna be on the, the Bellingham part of it all, but.
Are you talking, uh, on a column?
On a column.
Okay.
Just an idea. Then my second question is, there's something you raised, uh, last meeting, yes, is there was discussion about there being dimensions to this, to the building, where there would be
some depth to the column depth, some accent that would notice it.
And there was presentations to that effect, and I'm.
A parallel, a panel.
Yes, it was on the five, the May, the May renderings.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm wondering why they're not.
So, and I, I recall this from last, last meeting too. I, that was before Marcus was involved, so I'd have to go back and figure out that from Howland. I apologize, but I don't, that, that was the first I had heard about it.
If you, before you paint, I would suggest you look into the, the, 'cause I, I remember the depth conversation.
Yeah, it was six, and then I said, you better go twelve, because it's such a large building, you're not gonna notice six inches from the street, and that size, it was thirty-two foot walls.
The intent was to break up the.
Variation. Yeah.
And he seemed to say it was no problem to do. Now, I didn't know if he was gonna pour that in a tilted panel.
Yeah.
Or he was gonna metal frame it and then box it out.
Yeah.
And then make it look like part of the building.
Right.
That's high, but we never got to that part of the, the discussion.
Okay.
I think that's real important, and we maybe need to have a meeting to make sure that when this starts to happen, it happens correctly. Because that's a concern, because you definitely wanted that variation on that building, just because it was, it was big on that corner.
He actually brought it up. He started with six, and I moved it in as well.
Right. Wayne?
Yeah.
Wayne, from Howland? Yeah. Okay, so we came to jog, we can memory, I apologize.
Meeting, we can get a meeting on that too, just to make sure that we're all clear before anything.
Perhaps there's, there's clues in the presentation material that that can be helped with.
Yeah, I, I mean, right now it's a flat face. I don't know if you guys have been out there, but.
Yeah, sometimes the transition doesn't go to the development, and then when I do the project, if it's not in the print, don't get put out.
Yeah. And that wasn't, as I recall, that wasn't a condition, right? There was nothing in our approval about.
There was, and it's, we're still at discussion phase on that?
They, they knew the renderings that the board wanted when we made that approval. It was in all sheets. It was the five, whatever, the one we looked at last time.
Yeah, I, I, not showing here, that it was there, but they just wanted to, they don't, they end up revising any elevations for that.
I have no idea.
The design wasn't revised. It wasn't revised. And what did you get done? Yeah.
Well, it was, it was all agreed on. We didn't think, there's a need to make a condition, because we usually don't condition that one point with this. You know, they, they brought it up, we agreed, it went from six inches to twelve inches. And the intent was to, um, reduce the harshness of the buildings.
Yeah.
Because, because of its length and location.
Yeah. I, I'll, I'll ask the question.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, before we were.
That's fine.
We were brought on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch.
Yes.
We'll see you soon.
Good. Thanks for getting rid of me.
A lot of money. Next item on the agenda. Is the draft decision on Maple Street LLC Parcel Three.
Do we have a motion to open the hearing?
I'll make a mo, I, educate a motion to open that hearing, so.
Second.
Second, next.
All in favor of opening the hearing on Maple Street LLC Parcel Three?
Dismissed.
Phil.
George. Nick.
Most of that we can handle. Want to bring us up to speed on where we are?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Peter Brown, on behalf of the owner and the applicant. In Zoom, we have granted the vote of the board hearing, as well as Daniel Server from NextWrit. Um, at the last meeting, we essentially concluded our discussion on all outstanding items. We had voted to authorize Amy to prepare draft decision, but pretty much would mirror what we did on parcel one. Amy did that and she shared it with us. We renewed it. We had a couple of very slight, uh, comments which we put in a red line. And I emailed over and I gave Amy, uh, physical copies of that. Um, so. Couple of clarifying comments here and there, nothing substantive, and it just brings us with exactly what we did on parcel one. If I can go through them page by page.
Um, one question I have. Can you show me? We're, um, parcel two. You have access. From one through two to get to three. And conversely, from three, you go through two to get to one, and that nephew will be developed.
Right.
You outline that in the.
Sure, so what we did, because parcel two is in Franklin, what we did is I related, uh, the last meeting, I believe, to, um, Mr. Devine's question. Was we put in a condition on the parcel three approval in Franklin that said the solar facility. In parcel one and three will not be expanded on, will not be expanded upon. Or on to parcel two, and parcel two will remain open space. And that is a condition that's been accepted by the Franklin plan.
An open space in perpetuity? Is that in this decision?
It's not property that's in, that's in Bellingham.
All right, so have we seen that? Do we have a copy of that or?
Franklin's decision.
They haven't published.
How do we, they haven't published it yet, so how do, how do we tie that in? What we can do.
You, you have, so I think what you did effectively for parcel two last time is you put a condition in that. We can only use access, we can only use parcel two to access, one, this one will give us simply parcel two for access to parcel three. And no other purpose, so you have complete control over. The other problem was with respect to Dover Amendment and the other issue is if we go too broad with respect to Dover Amendment. To restriction on property with respect to solar and then becomes questionable as to its legal effect. But we have made clear in all of our application materials, in all of our plans, we did it in Franklin, we did it in Bellingham. The solar array is not being developed onto or expanding on to parcel two. We have no authority to go and do it. We've actively said we're not going to do it, and where the land is situated in Franklin. We have our approval that is going to be conditioned upon that. More importantly, you control our access. For any solar use at all at parcel one and parcel three, and I cannot use parcel two. For anything other than, at least at the right now, for the solar array of parcel one, and hopefully when this is approved. To use the solar array of parcel three. I have no right of access for a solar array of parcel two or for any other purpose. So I believe you are as protected of what needs to be and legally can be.
Okay, I may be, um, overreaching here. Can you memorialize that in a testament, bars?
And they have, it's a, it's a letter, yeah.
And then, uh, we can run, yeah.
I can put it with the decision with the town clerk.
All right. That makes you feel com, a little more comfortable?
I, I, I mean, it doesn't, it's not part of the decision, so it's, it's commentary if there's a, there, if there's a disagreement.
Yep. Both the language that you were just talking through, I thought we agreed that that was gonna be the language that we were talking through. I thought it was, however, but I didn't realize it at the time. We can dictate what happens in our decision on land that is not enveloped. So we, we get it on parcel one. The plans and.
Oh, no, no, you don't have to agree on anyone yet.
The plans that we're referring to though are. Are, are referenced here, right?
Yes.
It was different when we moved, it was different with parcel one, because parcel one wasn't giving me access to two. And three is. And I guess I have the same question that I had always was. We, we're, we're on the same page from the agreement, but it's just not in the decision. So that, I'm just trying to figure out how to put that into the decision. We'll, we'll reference a memorialized agreement. Between the applicant and the planning board. It's, it's like an addendum, so we can't put it. I lo, I, we cannot put a condition on property. In our decision. That is not in front, not enveloped.
We can't do the same thing without.
So what we would do is, um, simply reference an addendum or memorialized agreement. That addresses the fact. That parcel two can only be used to pass and repass from one to three and three to one. And, uh, it remains open space in perpetuity. What's wrong with putting parcel three is only to be used for passing through. From parcel one to. Again, it's, we can't. Cause we're only conditioning parcel three, which is enveloped. Am I wrong? No, parcel one is enveloped. Parcel. The access, right?
Or so the access, parcel three is most of the underground work that's gonna be for the wiring.
Which is in the south. Correct. It's the southern, southern three, which I, am I right, three?
Yes.
So southern three, what's wrong with saying that we're conditioning that that can only be used for access through? To, for access for three, two and one. Because we're only conditioning that piece of property which is in Bellingham, and we're saying it can only be used for, act, for. Um, we're agreeing, that what we agreed to before is not part of this. It's just not in there. You've made an agreement with Franklin, which isn't been published yet, that we don't have. We're on the same page, it's just, how do we, uh, you wanna make it a separate letter which isn't part of this?
Phil, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
What, what, what is your concern?
My concern is that. Three then becomes a pass through to two, whichever, whatever becomes a two, which isn't part of. Bellingham and isn't part of this, and then we've got traffic and everything else. It's, it's, it's. I know you've made an agreement with Franklin, but we don't have it.
It's not the agreement, it's, so the way you're protected is you get to three through one, right? So it's one to two to, to three. Three doesn't have any access. It's the same access. So when, when you protect it to. To your satisfaction, when you move one, you're covered for three, because there's no backdoor or other access through three, so. You get through one, that's our, that's our access within parcel two. Was, you could only be used for, for access, and the same goes over to three. So all we did is we took the, the condition, was the one that you wrote, and we added.
Which is number, you're gonna reference the what number?
The language we wrote, um, that you had proposed, and we wrote with a dirty sign.
Right.
Yeah, eleven's changed since, this weekend to two and three. But that's the discontinuation of the separate property. Six, that's not the, the access pieces. There was a permission. I think it's eleven. The applicant shall discontinue use of, okay. That's the private driveway. That's the other driveway. So that's the, that's not part of, that's something else. That's like, that's, that's giving up the other reason. What, what, what I'm trying to do is say, well, where's the path, the, the chairman brought up a great point, is that it's supposed to be, you know. The access is for, for these properties only, and these properties are.
Correct.
Are basically solar, not recreation. And that's what we're permitting, but that language didn't make it in here. For the chairman's point. Back one idea. Is we replicate, uh, item eleven. And say the applicant. Has the ability to pass and repass at one eighty-six Maple Street. I'm sorry, one sixty Maple Street. To access and repass. What I wanna say.
Yeah.
You know where I'm going?
So. We did, I found the language, which was something we added at the last provision, so it was probably not the last board version that was taken. So this divide on. Paragraph twenty-six. Um, not of this, not of this proposed decision of the parcel one decision. This is the language we wrote together with attorney side. Any change of use or increase of debt intensity of the permitted use. Shall require a public hearing to either modify the existing permit. With its additional, any change of use to parcel two shall require a new application of public hearing. And so that's how we dealt with that with parcel one. I had no issue bringing that forward on, on.
Why don't we add that in? With a stipulation. The parcel two remain open space in perpetuity. Would you be comfortable with that?
I'd ask my, uh. Yeah, that's Mr. Server.
And I would throw on that. You know, this, this, it says we're permitting this as a solar array only and not recreational. Or access.
It was number.
But that, to me, is the key there.
Regardless, they'd have to come back to the. And kind of proposing.
It was number twenty-six.
Okay, perfect.
So you think putting that in.
Well, I think by putting twenty-six in there, you're, you're covering yourself there. I mean, to say that they can't do anything further with this parcel, you know. Twenty-six clearly says, you know, you have to come in for your approval for anything.
Yeah.
We can't, we can't. I can't, I can't do, I can't do, with, with that paragraph twenty-six on one and three. Parcel two is shut down, regardless of anything else, unless we come before you and we give you permission.
So we add that in here.
Add that in here.
Yeah.
Uh, that was, that was, that was something that we did together.
Correct.
At the last meeting, that's why I probably didn't make that here. So we can't condition property in Franklin.
Nope, just, just for property and the use, Frank, excuse me, Bellingham is only to access those pieces.
So if I could, uh, just like quickly run you through the other, the other, the other things. Um, page one, it was just one date we, we want here. Page two, we just incorporated the letter that has the fifty thousand dollar donation that's being made. Um, with the parcel one and parcel three.
Yeah.
Um. I'm not getting.
A hundred?
No, no. Appreciate the advocacy, but. You did, you did a very, you did a very good job, and, you know, the fire chief is happy and we're glad to have, uh, reached that accommodation.
Yes.
All right, um, page three, we're not, uh, we're not requesting a waiver, so we just struck out language. Um, on. Four, we just, we, because this, the driveway is on parcel one, we just thought for clarification purposes. It was helpful to put in at the access at one sixty Maple, because there is no other access. So that was just purely for, for that part. On the next, which is the only substantive thing, which was on the north, there was no, uh, trees coming down on the south. There is, and Mr. Devora to address this, there were four trees where the utility poles are gonna go, and those are gonna be, um. Uh, put back to the extent, uh, that will be available. Uh, Mr. Devora, you wanted to very quickly run through that?
Uh, yeah, um, just to clarify that, that, that is shown on the plans that were provided, uh, for the board's reference. We noted the four trees that have to come out because of, uh, they'll be in conflict with the utility poles. Um, and then, uh, we proposed four trees, uh, in replacement. Uh, those were also discussed. With the conservation commission, um, during those meetings.
Uh, the trees, um, designated on a plan, on a landscape reconstruction plan with, uh, the species and the, and the size?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Any idea what caliber trees?
Can you share that screen? I don't know.
Uh, that, those plans were all submitted with, with the, uh, in the prior applications that were provided.
Do you have a caliber of tree?
Uh, yeah, they were, they were three-inch caliper.
What's the species?
Uh, it was oak.
Oak.
Okay. And how quickly do those grow?
Um, an oak tree, I mean, you're talking about height or you're talking about caliber increase, I mean, we.
It's three-inch caliper, it's probably, it's gotta be probably a twelve-foot tree.
Yeah, insulation, it'd be roughly about twelve feet, and they typically grow about six inches to a foot a year.
Okay, and that's fine.
Unless, unless you wanted an evergreen type, you know, instead of oak, it's a cube. This is just to replace trees being cut down.
Yes.
Yeah, it's just, just, we, we only have roughly, it was a little bit less than fifteen hundred square feet of disturbance along, along the front edge, um. And there's, there's still a vast amount of trees that would all remain along that front edge that. It was very limited amount of disturbance there.
I, I think oak trees will probably blend in more than.
Okay.
Um, the bottom of the page, again, it was just, uh, adding one sixty Maple for the access, nothing on the following page. Uh, for paragraph eleven. This mirrored what we did on parcel one, it's just adding parcels two and three, except for emergency access. Paragraph twenty-one just represents the letter and the, uh, that donation that's being made. And then paragraph twenty-two was made to match, um, what we did on parcel one. Which is that Bellingham would be added to the, uh. Uh, to the insurance.
Insurance.
Other than that, it's pretty much mirrored exactly what we did on parcel one and the applicant is informed with it.
With the addition of that one new paragraph.
With the addition of that one new paragraph, yes.
Twenty, uh, twenty-six.
And you can get that language, maybe tomorrow. Uh, there may be more evidence of any other questions before. Yes, the public. Anyone in the public cavity questions? In regards to, uh, parcel three on Maple Street? Then what I'd like to do now is make.
Can we, um, go to Zoom and just make sure there's nobody?
Does anyone have their hand raised? I don't see anyone. I would like to entertain a motion, close the public hearing.
Second, Nick.
Like to call for a motion to close, close the public hearing?
End of side.
Brian.
Phil.
Phil. Nick.
That motion passes unanimously. I would entertain a motion, or, Brian, you wanna make a motion? To approve the, um, decision as amended, so we'll.
Did you want to include before that, sorry, just.
With that paragraph?
That, and then did you want a letter, like Philip recommended? I just, it's, I know, I just, you had brought it up, so if you wanted or you don't.
We can reference.
Reference the letter, or reference, are you okay doing that?
I'm sure.
Writing a letter?
A memo, memorial of understanding.
Okay.
Fine. So those are two changes. So we're protected with access to one and three, three to one, as best we can in property. That's not in Bellingham. Any further discussion? Like to call for the, uh.
I don't think you had a second.
I'd like to, I'd like to second.
End of side.
Brian, I. Phil.
Phil.
Nick.
That motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure working.
Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect, thank you. Okay, um, I'll probably get this filed tomorrow.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Even the next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing. On eighty-five Menon Street, we had drafted a decision.
Yes.
Where do we stand right now?
Um, the decision was circulated to the board. We did have one.
Um, the decision was circulated to the board, we did have one, um, comment from, from one of the members in regards to, um. Uh, the speakers outside that I think that's probably one of the only items right now unless there's others that that can discuss. As part of the condition.
Okay, we all have a chance to look at the conditions.
Um, also, we have our new, um, to be director of planning and engineering that's here to offer any suggestions also.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Can you bring us up to speed on where we are? Have you seen the decision?
Yes.
Okay.
You're welcome.
So for the record, my name is Michael Dryden, senior project manager, Alan Engineering. Joining me, Alex Zakarsky, Project Alprotect. Um, two weeks ago, there were just a couple of minor outstanding items that we talked about, and one of which was a groundwater issue with the peer review consultant. Uh, I had several conversations with the peer review consultant and we came to the agreement that no further study is, is required, and that's reflected in his latest correspondence to the planning board. Uh, the other thing that the board had asked about was sound mitigation for the patio. And short of a sound study, what we did was provide a memo to the board dated, dated April ninth, that I provided with the revised plans. It's essentially just a bullet list of all the measures that were taken, um, to absolutely minimize sound impacts from the patio. I can go through that memo if you like.
Uh, how many bullet points are there?
Uh, it's just five or six.
Could you just give us the highlights, please?
Sure, so, um, and some of these we talked about last time, we reduced the patio area from eight hundred and eighty-three square feet to four hundred and fifty-eight, so that's almost a fifty percent reduction in area. The seat count was reduced almost, uh, over fifty percent, actually fifty-one percent from forty-nine to twenty-four. A forty-eight inch, uh, wall was added around the entire patio. Previously, we had. A gate situation or an access point on the east, that's been removed, so now we have more opportunities for, uh, that forty-eight inch, uh, wall as well as additional landscape plantings. Um, inherently by adding the walk-in freezer on the west side of the patio, that acts as sound mitigation, certainly. And then finally, uh, there was some discussion about the rooftop equipment. And Alex, feel free to, um, talk about that, I know that you incorporated the power that we all. Um, partially recessed that equipment, if there's anything more that needs to be said there.
I don't think so, I mean, it's, I think we added maybe six inches to the parapet since last time.
Okay.
And there's almost.
Yeah, more sound.
And then finally, just in terms of, of the hours of operation for the outdoor activity, we discussed ten P M.
Yep.
So that's summarized in the April ninth.
Okay.
I think that was included with the decision that you have.
Yep.
Um, and then when I put it out to the board, asking you for comments, there was that, you know, one comment that came in about, um. This live music and speaker outside, I think that was the only outstanding item at this point.
And I think you would, you did not plan that live music.
That's correct.
Okay, I think that came actually when the applicant was in the room.
Correct. And I think, and that is reflected in the decision.
Okay.
But the ability to have, you know, music, a speaker, um, is, is preferred, actually.
Okay.
So the live music is reflected in the decision, but, um.
We did discuss though the speakers, you know, the idea was this was fine dining outside, it wasn't to hear them, you know, didn't want. The idea was fine dining, it wasn't entertainment outside, it wasn't music outside or the speakers outside.
Yeah, we did discuss those speakers.
Speakers were part of that, right?
Yeah, the applicant, actually, we, we had some additional discussion, um, and the applicant definitely would prefer to have the ability to have some level of. You know, low level music out there, no different than, you know, you would, a full-size at an, at an adjacent residential property, so we're certainly not talking about large speakers and, um. It, it would be low level music consistent with, with outdoor dining.
For the ambience, correct.
Exactly.
Um, I'm. Fine with that, I, I, again, I'm just one person.
Yeah, I have a problem with that either.
I think, I mean, I think it's been made clear that it's not. Partying at this year, I think it's gonna be low level background noise, having a nice dinner. Is there a way? To kind of.
Find a happy medium with.
Find a happy medium, other than no, is there?
I, I, we, we couldn't, Brian, I know it's a concern of yours.
Um, well, it was, I think my memory is the same as Phil, there was something that the applicant had suggested that they wouldn't be using it, and I think it's a good idea, given the proximity to the homes, and I know that there's some common ownership now, but they won't be in the future. So I think a compromise, uh, just to think of prospective neighbors going, Lord, is fine, um.
Timing, maybe after a certain hour, music.
Yeah, I think that's fine, and, you know, we can go down a rabbit hole about the number of speakers, the size, the decibels, all that stuff, I don't think that's necessary, but I think. We need to afford the neighbors. Something they can point to in the decision, cause like, as we know, it's not a decision that doesn't exist. Um, something to say, hey, uh, the, that music is, you know, cause that's, that's a, that's a new option to this area, and there's a restaurant there and that's fine, but this is a new feature.
What have we done in that?
So this is, I think, the first time we've actually. First time I've been involved with. Going and putting an outdoor venue involved, I mean, I know they exist in town, but this is the first time we're actually, you know, right now, there's not a. There's not an outdoor option up there now, it's adding something to it, and I thought we had come up to a nice compromise where, you know. The owner himself spoke and said, hey, you know, I want, you know, this is fine dining, it's not, we don't want twenty-one year olds, it's not a twenty-year-old party zone, it's not, you know. Zone is my words, I think you said, you know, it's not twenty-one parties area. Um, you know, the no speaker, the no music, the no bands, the no live music, it was all, language came from. The applicant, I think.
No, we didn't offer that up, that, that was something the board.
Well, I was concerned about.
But we agreed to it in principle, but again, some, some additional discussion was had.
No.
And we, we have twenty-four seats on a very small patio, so.
Yeah.
It's just low level, low level music.
I, I think.
I don't wanna go down the rabbit hole.
Be very careful.
How do we do this?
I just personally think we need to be very careful and I'd be interested in Rob, way in, to say no speakers, I mean, that's, that's to me. That's overstepping our bounds to say no speakers, that's just personally what I feel like, um, a speaker. To say at a restaurant, they can't have a speaker outside, I just think we're overstepping our bounds, but that's only my opinion. Um, Rob, I'd be interested to see what you have to say.
Sure, good evening, everybody. Uh, you can hear me all right, right? Yes, okay, perfect, thanks, um. Well, I know we actually have in our zoning bylaws, there is a zoning or, area, noise ordinance in there. So, and it's based on basically the receiving district, so in this case, um. You have residential zones around you or residential uses, so. I can actually pull it up, if you give me one second. I have it pulled up, I think, um, in the daytime, you're allowed. I think it's fifty decibels that in the nighttime, it's forty-five, so. Basically, I guess what I'm getting at is, is that, you know, I don't think you have to be too creative with the condition here, because there are, um. You know, there are regulations in place that people, you know, they have to abide by, so. Essentially, I think the concern would be if we didn't have any regulations in place, they put in speakers outside, it becomes an issue, and now it's kind of a back and forth with. The property owner in the town saying, hey, there's an issue, you know, you need to fix it, um. You know, there's regulations in place, if it becomes an issue, I mean, zoning bylaws, I mean, we can get involved and basically tell them. Look, you gotta fix this. If it's over forty-five decibels at night, then you can't have it, it's not allowed, so that would be, I don't know if that makes sense to the board, um.
I, I thought there was a bylaw somewhere, I didn't, I don't have it memorized like you do.
Hold on, I don't have it memorized.
So you feel like, you feel like you didn't.
Yeah, we have a regulation. Yeah, we have a regulation. So, um, you know, the other thing is, um, you know, we have a, um, a business owner that's been in town for a long time.
Yeah.
Um, and we've gone through a lot of things with this business owner, through COVID, trying to, you know, uh, the patio, uh, situation, outdoor dining, you know, so there's been a lot of, uh, cooperation too. So, and we have a bylaw, you know, um, we have a decibel rating, we have a nighttime, daytime, so I think, um. The, the bylaw would regulate that, so if it was at a point where the neighborhood, uh, it was too loud for the neighborhood, we would most certainly go visit the restaurant, and I'm sure they would be accommodating and understand, but. At the end of the day, the regulation rules on it, so, I mean, they're, they're only gonna be able to have it so loud. That's why the regulation is there.
And we are just looking to, to have it loud enough so that one table is not listening to the next table's discussion. It just kind of adds for a little bit of, a little more privacy per table, you understand what I'm saying? It's not, we're not looking to put Led Zeppelin or Aerosmith on, laugh in, we're not, that's not what we're, our intent is, and you are right, we did say, well. He said, he was, he didn't even need the speakers out until I got home, and I was like, what are you doing? So it, it did become another conversation for us.
Take care of what you've said, I don't know if you've Googled it, I apologize.
No.
For using my phone in a meeting. Um, forty-five to fifty-five decibels. This is the largeness of a typical conversation. Uh, listening to any sound at eighty-five decibels or above for eight hours could result in permanent loss, however, again, we're going back to the statement. Forty-five to fifty-five is the largeness of typical conversation. So your thought of having music? On the floor, in the ceiling, so people don't hear other people's conversations.
Right. Just to kind of break up.
Give them more of an ambience.
Yeah, that is it.
So I, I would be fine. They're, they're aware of it, the town's aware of it. That we, um, we could strike.
And it's obviously something we'll be very conscious of, knowing that we've had this conversation. We're not looking to make any of our, our new neighbors angry at us, like, we wanna have good neighbors, we've always been good neighbors, so.
Well, and I would imagine the speakers are gonna be positioned in the patio area.
And they'll come down, we won't, we won't have them going out into the, we'll have it come down somehow.
So there won't be any speakers upon any of the sides of the building or anything like that, would just be in the patio area?
If, if we have to, I don't know how they're gonna put them, cause I, we haven't even discussed that part yet, but. Obviously, we can have them where they face, even if they're on the building, they'll face into a downward position.
But in the patio.
But in the patio.
If that's an issue, we're gonna know already.
I agree with Tim, I'm not worried about it.
No, I'm not worried, yeah.
I agree with what Rob has said, it's the, the noise bylaws.
Yeah, they don't kind of.
Right.
Anything else?
I think that is it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Before, um, I close the public, uh, hearing. Any, any other words from anyone in the public? Yes, sir.
Hi, Don Coelho, Lake Street, just a question, I don't wanna open up a can of worms, I agree with where you guys are at, but the patio, it sounds like was shrunk. And I'm just curious as to why it was made smaller and not the original one, I wasn't able to log in.
Um, I believe that's something the applicant. Did after our first read, I don't, I don't recall asking them to decrease. The size of the patio or something.
It was part of the value engineering exercise that the project went through.
You can figure that out, but. Go on, all right, thank you.
Yep. Anyone else?
So, Chair, can I just ask a quick question, Michael Soder, forty bucks over. Um, if that, even though they downsized the patio, could they potentially leave the patio the same size, but leave the same square footage for sitting space? So if eventually they wanted to come back to the planning board, they didn't have to come back and redesign it, they can actually do a turn of construction without. Adding more parking, because they're not adding more people, but they can actually go to the original square footage of the space.
That's real.
Um. I'm sorry?
I said, Rob probably hasn't been.
Rob, your opinion?
Um.
I have an opinion, but I'll.
Well, if you have an opinion, you can go ahead. Um, I, I guess.
As long as we're, um. Keeping the seating capacity the same.
You're not adding any more parking.
And we're, and we're, we're looking at, um. A future down the road capacity. Um, I think it makes. Good business sense to look at that. Uh, I don't know what the impact would be if they added more, more seats down the road on parking, but that will be taken in consideration. But I don't see a problem.
I think you misunderstand, Mr. Chair, if you give them the permission to build the eight hundred square feet patio.
Yep.
Still approve tonight the. Capacity for the seating, they would still have to come back to you with a plan to increase the seating to that eight hundred.
Correct.
Capacity to show where they're gonna get the additional parking.
Correct.
If they decide to stay, you're in the construction stage now.
I was getting there, but yes.
Yeah, they can have the patio space, so they don't have to do it after.
I, I don't.
Have it there already.
I'm just one person, Nick. I think it makes decent business sense.
I think I would. Think I would, is that what they're asking for?
Well, I was, I was gonna say, we should have this discussion with the owners here, uh, is, is that something that you would be interested in? Or are you satisfied with the patio as it's currently constituted?
Well, yeah, I mean, eventually, we would like to make it better, but as of right now, we're, we're doing what we're doing, so.
We typically, I mean, typically, it's a minor, 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 or major change to a plan, which we hear. There would have to be sort of new plans, I would think, that would have to be drawn up and.
You know, I, I guess that's my only sort of, um, apprehension here, is we have plans that are fully revised and ready for your approval. Uh, they show a certain size, it's an easy change, but I certainly wouldn't want to delay this process to revise plans again.
I would imagine that, without predicting the future, that if that was the only change. Uh, I think that would be a minor change. I don't think.
I, uh, mind if I step in for a minute?
Of course.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think it would be a minor change, if there were any expansions in the future, it would probably warrant just some type of. Written, basically, decision stating that, listen, you know, if you're expanding your, uh, your patio, you're definitely gonna want to, or we're gonna wanna make sure that the seating count hasn't increased. The other issue too is just as far as where you're expanding, because. If you're expanding the patio into the parking area, for example, and it might affect the traffic patterns or. You know, the emergency access around the building. That's something that I think town staff is gonna wanna just take a look at and. But, you know, it's not out of the question to expand the patio in the future by any means, um. But I, I think if the question is, can we, you know, double the size of the patio and just do it without. Talking to town staff, I think the answer would be no, you know, it'd be nice to. Bring that to us and we'll figure out if it's gonna be just a minor change. Or if it warrants something a little bit different, um. But. That's my opinion, I'm hearing crickets on this end.
Yeah, the way we have it now, it's just perfectly fine.
Yes, I, I'm fine, yeah, I'd be, I'd be fine. Going towards approving this with taking the words, you know, removing the speaker limitation, so the sentence that says outdoor speaker shall not be used at any time, remove that. And it sounds like we have enough. Enough, uh. Enough bylaw that we can enforce, what, you know, if it becomes an issue with a future owner or something like that, we can enforce it.
Now, I don't think there's a need to put decibels in there.
I, I don't wanna, yeah, if, if we've got enough teeth right now, I say. I have, I don't, I don't see anything else I'm gonna look at. I don't know how much the board feels, but.
Anything else? Before closing, anyone on Zoom?
Nobody on Zoom.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Have a second?
Second, Nick.
May by Brian, seconded by Nick, close the public hearing. All in favor?
Dennis, I.
Brian, I. Go on.
Go on, Nick, I.
Go on, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
That's the close of the hearing?
No, they, you just closed it, so you can make a motion to approve the decision with that amendment to no speaker.
Entertainer motion to approve.
Second, Nick.
To approve the decision with the one. To approve the decision with the one, one sentence taken out in reference to speakers.
Dennis, I.
Brian, I.
Phil, I.
Phil, I. Nick, cut.
That motion passes.
So.
Thank you very much. Oh, right, right, thank you. Oh, and, and to that, um, and there were waivers, and those, those are in the decision, so they're captured.
You, um. Were you separate speed naming in this decision?
This is basically, um, for the, for the flexible parking special permit, and, um. It's just the standard decision that Jim had crafted in regards to the flexible parking. And you have reviewed it, and it's, I think it's, there's no questions, I don't, I don't have any.
Does anyone have any comments? Do the neighbors have any comments? Seeing none, hearing none. Uh, I would entertain a, um.
Motion.
Motion to close the public hearing. On eighty-five Benden Street Restaurant. Flexible parking special permit decision.
I would second. Second, Nick.
Made by Brian, seconded by Nick. Call for the vote.
Dennis, I.
Brian, I.
Phil, I.
Phil, I. Nick, cut.
That motion passes, your name is. We're entertaining a motion for approval. Of the eighty-five Benden Street Restaurant, flexible parking special permit decision.
Second, Nick.
Made by Brian, seconded by Nick. Any discussion?
Brian, I.
Phil, I.
Phil, I. Nick, cut.
That motion passes.
Thank you once again.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much, Mr. Brian.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Thanks, everyone, thank you for helping the process, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you for everything you did for the town. It, it, it is missed. It was a legend here. And I wish you the best of luck, you, thank you very much, thanks. Wish you both the best, thank you. Thank you for participating. The next item on the agenda is continued public hearing. On North and Blackstone Street. This is the continued public hearing for the audience. You tell us where we are now, Amy?
Yes, uh, we met at the last meeting and there was a few items we needed clarification on, and, um. The attorney has been in communication with, um, our peer reviewer, and also, um, we used. Rob to give some clarity in regards to the basin. If we're gonna use the conservative, the ultra-conservative view from, um, Tetra Tech Environmental or T-. So, Rob, I don't know if you're on, if you could give some clarification on that, on what you would recommend.
Um, yeah, so. If I recall, from looking at the, what the peer review, um, comments were. I believe they're basically, the comments were essentially with the two basins, be less conservative on one and more conservative on the other. If I recall correctly. And it, based on the soil classification and the soil testing that we have, it sounds like GNH. In my opinion, is, is doing this the correct way as far as the design. I would say that we have in the past, um, we've made conditions where. During construction, essentially, when you're, when you're putting in a basin, you know, you have confirmatory test pits that are. Observed by town staff or, or even the peer review consultant. Just to make sure that the subsurface soils that you're infiltrating in are, are actually what was designed for. And I would recommend that that's probably the solution. Conditioning something like that for. This, uh, situation, so it would both appease. The peer reviewer and it would just kind of put some belt and suspenders approach for the, uh, stormwater design. If that makes sense.
Okay.
Could we just take?
What I'd like to do now, just stop for one moment. I'd like to, uh, make a motion to open the public hearing. On North and Blackstone Street. Have a second?
Second, Nick.
Any discussion? Olive, um. Phil, I.
Phil, I. Nick, cut.
That motion passes, your name is.
So that was one item, so I feel like we've got clarity on that, and then there was the other, um, item that was in regards to. The, a butter that was here in regards to the lighting. That was coming off of the site and, um, you received. Which they would like as far as mitigation, but I think there needed to be some discussion on if that's reasonable or not.
I'm gonna ask the attorney to.
Sure, um, for the record, Brian Fogg from Eric O'Connell here on behalf of the applicant.
By the way, we, no relationship.
No, not at all. So the, the neighbor had sent an email, um, asking that, it's a, the issue that came up was a concern that. Our, um, driveway in and out, really the exit, that there was gonna be. Um, light from cars that were gonna be having a negative impact on, um, a home across the street. Um, and as I noted at the hearing last time, we positioned the, the location of that driveway, so. Um, cars pointing out would be, would be directed towards a lawn area, essentially directly opposite the, the lot line between two parcels across the street. And so there was a request from the neighbor that we put in, um, some tall pine trees, um, along the street side of their property. Um, and. We took a look at it and we really don't think that would do anything with respect to the ported concern. Um, because they wouldn't be directly opposite the, the street, that would be on two proper, uh, two, two different parcels. Um, it would be further down, which wouldn't really do anything, even if, if car layers to be issued, so. Uh, we, we think the solution is already there, which is the position of the driveway. Um, cars coming out, again, this is, we're now down to, um, fifteen units, um, two bedroom each. The number of cars that are gonna be kept here, um, overnight is maybe in the low twenties is our thought. Not all coming out at the same time, a few times a car comes out at night. Lights are gonna be aiming towards existing lawn area and woods, not towards homes and not towards driveways, so. I, I don't think any off-site, uh, plantings are gonna make any difference, um, to the extent that this is a, is a concern.
Can I ask if you analyzed the cost of the off-site plantings?
We, we did not, no. What's, I'm sorry?
Can you estimate that? How many?
Before we do that, do you mind if we listen to what Rob, he actually has looked at this and he has a, I think. What the board would like is a pretty good recommendation, um, which could be included in other things if, if you guys so choose, but, um, he. Did take a look at this and had a great suggestion on what we might be able to do to maybe. Rob, I don't wanna speak for you, but you had a really good recommendation, what could help look at this onsite, really?
Yeah, my recommendation would be if, um, if the applicant could actually. Um, survey and mark out the location of that curb cut, maybe the center line and. Where the, um, the radiuses are in the curb, so we can actually see. At the site where that driveway is, because. Right now, you're looking at the field and it does look like, you know, there is a house directly across the street from the field. If we can kind of get an orientation of where that driveway is proposed, which you can't really visualize when you're out there currently. Um, I think that that's gonna give us a better representation of where those headlights are gonna be pointing and. Based on the plans, it does look like it is aiming towards almost the void between the two houses, so. I would just be interested to see where exactly that's where, um, the driveway is going to be located. And I think doing that and doing a site visit, I think we'll, we'll really be able to, to indicate. You know, where those headlights will be pointing when they exit the site. If that makes sense.
Could I add to that, Rob? I think we also may wanna do, is we need to have a driveway put in here at some point in time. And once that driveway is, um, finished. We can request the applicant to start to plant trees, so they can mature over time while the building is going on. So that, I don't know how long the build-up will be for this. But, you know, they're more mature, uh, once the driveway goes in and, um. They're bigger trees. In regards to, um. Maintaining the trees. And cutting down an existing tree. That involves easements. And liability, uh, to the town, that I don't think the town wants to assume. Cause we would have to en- entertain into easements to maintain those. And then, um. As a rule. I, I feel uncomfortable having the town have the exposure. Through a third party, based on a letter sent to us, oh, cutting down a tree. Yeah, that goes against, um. E- everything I know, with, you know, thirty-five odd years in risk management. And we, we don't want that exposure. I can't speak for the applicant. I can assume they would not want that exposure as well, for easement to maintain something. Or the, um, exposure of cutting down a tree.
Well, through the chair, we, we, we would, we would have serious concerns about a condition that requires us to do, um, improvements on. Property that we don't own, don't control, um, I don't think through a special permit condition, that's something that the board could really give us. A level of comfort on, it's really not much different than having us do improvements on a state highway that we don't have control over and we don't know what's, what's common. Is going to say, um, you know, the, the. The option, or the, the comment about putting in the, the buffering trees, remember. All along the furniture Blackstone Street, we've got twelve-foot arboretis on plan. Um, so we're starting at twelve feet, they're gonna be a pretty, um, thickly, um, placed for significant screening, far more than is there now. Man, you're looking at a pasture now, but the, but the screening is gonna be fairly robust, uh, for the, for the size of the project. I, I would, I would ask that we consider, i- the, the idea of staking the driveway, I understand. I would hope we could do that as a condition of approval, um, because if, if we're not looking to do off-site. Landscape, and I don't really know what the, what the purpose of the staking would be now. We do it as a condition of approvals that folks can see early on where it's going to be, and while we're doing construction, we can revisit it. Uh, but in terms of staking now and going out now, I, I, I don't know what the, what the real value would be, if we're not doing off-site landscaping.
I'd actually like Rob's idea, I'd like to see it first, to see whether or not we do need to mitigate in some way. I'm not, I hear the chairman's concerns, I hear the applicant's concerns, but. I would like to see it, I think, uh, just to see whether it is a concern, because. I mean, we, we talked about this last time, you know, maybe there is some mitigation that does need to be done. Offsite, um, but I'd like to see what it looks like before. Where the driveway is, I, I, I support Rob, Rob's input. Can I suggest a, maybe a practical step? That, you know, looking at what, what, you know, based on this map, if the road does. Seem to be that it doesn't directly, um, line up with the hall, there is the spray of the turn, right? When somebody turns, there's gonna be the spray of the light, I think that's legitimate. But I think, practically speaking, the cost of three arboretis. When, and, and planting them across the street, obviously, you have no obligation to maintain them, that would be the whole, or is, um. I think that is far more economical, more efficient and just, um. And to have it staked out and for us to go out there and look at it and. And then come back and say, maybe you just plant three arboretis. At the end of the day, that's the solution, why don't we just cut to the chase, I think that's cheaper for the applicant all the way around, so. But maintaining it, no, that doesn't, that, that doesn't make sense.
Uh, of course.
To the chair, um, Amanda with Gary and Hammond. So the plan that we have up right now with the aerial, um, shows that driveway entrance. Um, if you look right across the street, this, kinda see where my mouse is moving? That's a, um, pine tree that's right there. Um, so in order to put up screening and spray, um, light spray, you're gonna have light. Spray from the cars traveling around the corner. As much as, you know, coming out that it takes three seconds to turn. Um, and the mitigation, um, staking out the driveway, it's, you can't put mitigation at the end of the driveway. Um, obviously, cause that cuts off access to Blackstone Street, um, if you put it across the street. Now, you're cutting down, uh, a tree that's, that's there.
Oh, we're not, excuse me, we're not gonna try to treat it.
So, so, again, right next to it, to the right, is a driveway. So then it's gonna go across the driveway. So you have a tree, and this is two sixty-eight Blackstone Street right here. So the concern is gonna be when the car takes a left-hand turn out. For about three seconds. That's not gonna be idling there, and the mitigation is, um, on the opposite side of the driveway. So the lights are already gonna go across the street regardless, there's a driveway there. Um, so the, the mitigation from any light spray, um. It's not, it's not gonna be captured by additional screening on the side of the street. Um, so. The, the driveway's been specifically positioned across, um, at a property line. To mitigate. Car lights from shining in windows, um. At that point, as best we can, that we had a, to turn, so just stuff to, to consider.
I, I, I appreciate it, and, and I, I do think that, like you said, that the, the number of vehicles exiting. Given the, the size of this development. Would be relatively minimal. Perhaps another practical solution is, is I understand that there's a pine tree that would have to be removed. To, to, to line up the, the, perhaps you say. To that homeowner, well, the cost of three arboretis would be. Uh, whatever, and here's the whatever amount, what, if and when you decide to remove that pine tree. Please use this money to, to build, to plant those three arboretis, that way it's not on you to. To do anything other than to give them the option to do that, if and when they remove that pine tree. That might, that might give them some comfort.
I'll play a little bit of ignorance here, told, we saw this. So. To place the pine trees. They wanna put in. We, they want you to take the tree out.
Right.
Okay. I think we're in agreement. That we don't, we don't want the responsibility of the applicant to have, of picking that tree in. So I, I agree with Brian. We try to, you know. Give them the, um. I, 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 you know, he didn't.
Well, well, there's just two options I think you're getting to. Either one, we stake it out and go look, which may not be the most economical way of doing it, or number two is. The mitigation that is being requested by the neighbor might be an easier way to just. Proposal letter, write a letter saying, hey, we're gonna do this. You know, three arboretis plus installation would be this, two. Whatever the mitigation would be that was requested. And do it in the future with a letter where, where there's no liability to the town, you don't have liability. They can do what, exactly what they're asking, and it's a quick, easy fix. Otherwise, I think we gotta go out and look at this thing and try to just decide whether or not it's in the way. You know, your ground's here, but I heard testimony about the lights in the bedrooms growing up through the years. I'll let you, you know, uh, uh, Brian, I think I've, I think your idea are the best, but I'm willing to do one of the above.
I, I, I think Rob's idea is, is, is the best, stake it out, let's see where the, the center of the road. I I I think Rob's idea is 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 the best, stake it out, let's see where the the center of the roadway is and go take a look at it. You know, and see what the impact's gonna be. If it's staked out, you're gonna see exactly where the headlights are coming and. You're gonna be able to picture what could be done to mitigate it, if anything, you know, I mean, it's the only way you're gonna know. On the location, how do you fix it? Right, I mean, you know, it it even for the homeowner's uh benefit, you know.
You have a comment?
Yeah, Christine Tepio, one twenty seven North Street, have a question, cause we keep saying arbivides. And way back like in our neighborhood meeting, we said arbivides are not trees for our area. Cause the deers are in the field, the deers are gonna destroy them, like we have them in our backyard as a parker. And the deer will eat them, so it's pointless to put those in in our thought.
Sorry to interrupt you, they they're they are gonna use deer resistant everything located.
There is such a tree.
Yes.
All of our landscaping plans call for that, cause we heard that concern.
Yeah.
So they did hear.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
David Wyatt, eighteen Stephen Road, um, I'm not sure if they heard from. George Wolf after our meeting, our last meeting in regards to screening or whatever, but I know when we were talking about them before. That really wasn't an option, cause George likes to sit outside his driveway. In the summertime and watch people go by and whatever, so any type of covering would block him into. His own little area instead of sharing out, you know, enjoying his comfort zone.
The chair, we we heard that as well, that's why we were somewhat surprised to see that then the request was to put. Um, pine trees in that area, cause we had heard that that was that was a concern that that the neighbor wanted to maintain.
And then they want to screen it off.
Correct, that's why we're sort of at a loss for.
Hi, I'm sorry, I'm Erica Wolf Divinello, I am on um Zoom, I was not able to be there. This evening, but I am George Wolf's daughter and I was there last week. Um, so if I may take just a moment, thank you. Um, I would love to have this staked out, um, I'm in full agreement with that, um. I will say, I'm not trying to put, or we're not trying to put liability on the town. The one tree that is currently there is pruned up by five feet. So it protects us to no light pollution whatsoever, so that's why we're asking for that tree to be moved, removed. And then having three pine trees just to the left of the driveway, which is exactly where. The proposed driveway will be, we're not asking for any. Light pollution protection to the right of that driveway. And then the light spray from that parking lot will also be an impact. Which is why the three trees going across on the left side of the driveway only.
I don't think that's unreasonable.
You're sorry?
I said, I don't think that's unreasonable.
And now you also mentioned that light pollution coming from the street, if you look at that street and look how far back our houses. The house on the other side protects us from any streetlight pollution, so I'm sorry, that's just not a factor. And I just, I just feel as though the punitive damages along this one home. It all is impacting this home and then our neighbor, everything is directly in front of us, there. There, I would love to see this staked out so that we can understand better. The full impact of where this driveway and where the parking lot as well will be.
Thinking creatively, is anyone considered blackout shades?
That's what I thought.
I- in the house.
Why should, why should a citizen have to go to that type of?
Seriously.
Come on, that's not a reasonable request. No, I'm if. If the trees themselves aren't gonna block light. Decent shades absolutely would, I don't know if that's an option, just thinking creatively.
Thank you for the thought, but I I don't think that's what my father is looking for.
So it sounds like everybody's in agreement about the staking, is that so that we can keep this moving forward, is that, it sounds like. Is that, is that doable? We can have it staked out next week.
Is that, if if they can do that next week, that gives us time to have everybody go out there before, if we were to, can you continue this till the twenty fifth?
Okay, so what's what's the thought?
Our thought was, we can get a stake next week, let's take a look at it. It seems from last time and then from the comments I've heard in the interim. That we're we're pretty much out of issues at this point, so my thought would be, we stake it next week. Um, if the board is comfortable that that's the only lingering issue, that's something that. Um, we can, we can work on a condition if need be.
Okay.
Between now and then, and the rest of the issues could be addressed with a with a. Decision before the board at at its next meetings, we're we're there, I I. From my perspective, we're there, there aren't any other remaining issues, it's. If this one is still something that folks wanna see, stake it next week and we can work on a condition between now and and the board's next meeting. And wrap up that.
Are we talking a Saturday site visit?
No, I I I don't, I mean, unless, I think everybody could drive by unless you want one that's scheduled, but. I don't think we need to all go there, cause it's credit, probably a drive-by, but if you want a planned meeting, we'd have to post it for Saturday.
And notify everyone.
On Saturday?
Yeah, whatever day is good for you. I can drive by, whatever, whatever.
If we can get them up tomorrow, we can notify.
No.
So, um, what's the width of the road?
Twenty, twenty four, twenty two.
Is that with the radius?
I think we went to twenty four.
It wouldn't be wider than twenty six.
From radius to radius.
Then the round needs to be additional.
Twenty four foot. And you're gonna mark out the center line, Amanda?
It'll be center line and oxygen.
Does that drop down midfield? Um, I have to, I wanna go look at the.
I think it's pretty low with across the street. Yeah, I didn't know, cause.
So we'll get it staked. By our next meeting, we'll look, and then what is the board's feeling about any other outstanding issues? Are there anything?
I think that's it.
I I think that you had a number of issue questions that you had, I think they were all reasonable, right, other than.
The drainage was the one that required, I think, what I was thinking, and I think your your um, your engineers resolved that. The other items, we had submitted an email sort of, cause I I walked everyone through it last time, you didn't have the benefit of the letter in front of you, so I. I sent Amy emails um describing them all, what. Environmental partners position was, what our position was, they're all very minor items, but I think we've addressed them all, they can be dealt with through waivers and in the draft condition.
Yeah, I that's that was my memory, and was there one that the fire chief weighed in, it was like the 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 detention base and and was there a fire chief one?
No, not not what I heard.
Alright, so I I'm thinking of that, but yeah, but I thought all the the conditions and waivers were all reasonable. The only one we had a question was with Rod, when he's weighed in, was a condition.
Did that even go with the um. The handicaps, I think there was some handicap conversation in there too. Yeah, so that'd be unconditional, hopefully, against the.
I think that we could probably have a a decision draft this.
For the ninth. I think we need to, yeah, I mean, if that's, if that's okay with everybody, get it staked out within the next week, you guys look at it. And then we can discuss if there's any mitigation at that point from what you see on site and then have a draft decision ready to go. If that's what the board so chooses for the ninth.
I think that's fair, but I like to be pointed.
Oh, absolutely, have the public in, any any other comments from the public?
Yeah, I have one comment. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
This is Rod Cameron from uh Blackstone Street. I've raised this issue a couple of times and it seems to be uh ignored. Um, I have, I've been ha- I've had access to my field for a very long time and. The construction company said that they would look into maintaining that access. And all these plans that I've seen so far have not maintained that access, what is gonna be done about that?
Good point, so you did, you asked and raised.
So, Rob, I I I think. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that that is a civil matter between you and the applicant and it's not. Anything the town can necessarily, we can't impose an easement upon. Uh, the applicant, you might already have one by as a matter of law, if you've been using it for a number of years. But um, there's. That's a little bit out of our wheelhouse. Um, for that, for us to impose any conditions on uh the applicant for. But I'm happy to, if the applicant has. An update for us, we can have, we can have that discussion. Now, if you have an update.
We don't, and I I agree with you, and the other concern is that we've got a conservation restriction that would be potentially impacted by that. It's really not something we have contemplated with the conservation restriction going in there, the whole point of that is to. Um, is to not have that area used for, you know, non non passive recreational purposes.
And the other um part of that is. Um, conservation commission is dealing with, cause we're also dealing with natural heritage. Um, for our preservation of the box turtle, I think it's eastern box turtle, that's our priority habitat out there. Um, which is why the conservation restriction is being there and that was in place for the, um, whether, you know, the the prior uh use, but. That area including um, and I have to look at the mass map, but I believe. The budding properties are also subject to that um natural heritage, which is a protected. Um, any type of work or or um. Something's done on that property may may bring up further issues with.
Let me ask you this, as a fact, is this a homeowner association?
Yes.
So is there something in the homeowner association that um we could put in there that this into, this gentleman has. The right to pass over the land, not with a car or not, you know, just to walk, I suppose, right, if that's how.
No, this this would be something I'd wanna access it with a tractor.
Alright, so that that is, then that is something I, and I'm I'm sorry to tell you this, but I I really didn't think that's a civil matter between you and the applicant.
Yeah, but hold on a second, because you guys are allowing them to build it, it's essentially blocking it out, so. I wouldn't be able to even access it after the fact, because you're building a basin there, you're building houses there. How would that even be possible after the fact?
So that you, so what you're asking is legal questions that maybe that if you retained an attorney, they might be able to tell you that. Perhaps you already have an easement, you've used it for a number of years, I don't know the facts, but. Perhaps um that's a discussion you can have. With legal counsel, but that that's not something that we can, we can't condition. An easement on this applicant, we want to help you and and. Uh, somehow to give you access to your property, cause it's landlocked, what are you gonna do? I think you have a pretty good argument that you do have an easement. And perhaps that's something you could work with him on, if if you have some conversations with him about what his use is and. Perhaps something through the homeowners association to give him some sort of. Narrow strip of access and use.
Yeah, I'm not asking for much, just just so I can get like a tractor out there and that's all.
What do you mean?
Like a, like a, like a, you know, something that you would use on a farm, like a, like or like a lawnmower or. Lawn tractor.
Are you like hauling out? Any anything or are you just cutting it, just trimming it?
What would be the passing and re-passing for?
Uh, agricultural use.
Maybe there's a conversation you can have with the applicant and maybe there's some. Creative ways we can just use the homeowners association to give you access to your property.
Okay, that'd be great.
Who owns the land? Do you? Right now.
I own the land right behind that green area. A little to the left of that, where that arrow's rotating, that field that's back there behind that line of trees.
And you need access to his. His land. Correct?
Yeah, I need access through that land to get to mine. Doesn't matter to me if it's through the dark green or the light green.
I think we're gonna run into uh habitat area.
The the dark green is habitat area, it's also the conservation restriction, subject to national heritage.
That line only goes until. Where the wetlands are, once you start heading left on the screen. It's no longer gonna be that conservation restriction area, correct?
It's, it's not our, so this entire green area, the dark green. That's up here, that's all going to be conservation restriction easement. Through natural heritage because of the protection of the the box turtle. So that's why this area was limited to such a small area of the disturbance. Natural heritage on uh the state maps. Um, there's areas where there's priority and rare species. And it's not just on this property. It's on, um, you'd have to look at the maps, because I'm not sure of the extent of it.
Yeah, it's on my property as well, yeah, the it it's only in the wetland area.
It's not.
How does he access, how does, how do you access now?
Where the field.
Through the field, you go right through there now, so you go.
No, not not the wetlands, through the field.
Right, so he goes through, so you cross that currently now.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it crosses through the area that's being developed.
Yeah, that's good, I I think.
Get to the dark green area.
Right. That that's. I think that's it, we need to figure that out, I I think we need to figure that out.
If there's an answer, I don't know what the answer is. Yes.
Yeah. So. We could, yeah, that's, we're gonna have to figure that out.
I think we um.
This is the the entire property, correct, Rob, right here?
Uh, kind of, it's split up, that's an older map. But more or less, yes, that's the property we're talking about.
And the access, the the frontage is currently on Blackstone Street, but there's wet ones here, so you can't access it, correct?
That's right, yep.
Is that something that between now and May, we can either meet with? With you or all of us meet to figure out a resolution? There may not be, but I, I would wanna know to protect the board and maybe this, but are we able to do that too? I don't know.
If I may, I don't know that there will be a solution, I agree that it would be a civil matter, I mean, right now. I'm not aware of any easement on record.
Yep.
I'm I'm not aware of an agreement at this point to do that, I mean, he's currently using. Property that is not his, I trust this field, because he has wetlands that interfere with his ability to get to the property. I don't have an answer for you, I I would suggest that it's not. Within the board's jurisdiction, you issue a decision, you issue a decision, but um, I I think it's a a private.
Okay, yes.
We tried, we just bring up another point, so we got a late email regarding the water test, uh, did you see that from Jesse?
Yes.
Okay, so there's an estimate for the um, the testing for the uh pressure. I believe for the spring, uh, to see if you have the correct water uh pressure, yeah. There's an estimate from uh the company, there is a cost involved. Yeah, it was a late email.
Yeah, I haven't seen the email, I I heard from Amy to describe it, I to to us. That's really more of a water connection issue rather than a permitting issue, so. If you if you do a condition that we have to work with DPW on water connection.
They would be subject to that.
Yep.
And we could put that in as a condition, so I didn't, I didn't forward it yet to the applicant, cause I didn't wanna. Forward it, cause it went to Jesse, who's our director, and so that's, but I figured we could put it in as a condition. Because it will have to be done, absolutely, okay, perfect, perfect, yeah.
What do we see is having conditions for this, in addition to normal? You're gonna have one with the um. The staking of the property. The driveway for the person across the street. And ideally with with them.
We're gonna do that now anyway, right, and am I correct on that, so that we wouldn't be putting in a condition, I, we're putting, I mean, that now, right? And if there's a mitigation. Based on whatever you find on the field, yes, okay.
So that would have to be, if you want us to vote on it. On the uh first meeting in May, would have to be documented.
Whatever the results are that we can discuss, sure, let me put that down for possible mitigation.
So I think that's one condition. Um what's the condition you wanted to add?
Me?
Yeah.
No, I think that he uh the applicant had requested certain um waivers and.
And we we feel comfortable with.
They're all, I in my opinion, all relatively reasonable.
Okay.
Or reasonable, um the only ones that we didn't have a good handle on is the one that Rob addressed. So I think, I think we have enough to draft a decision and. Between then and now and then, we can. You know, when we come back, we'd have further conditions or concerns or. We'll have a better idea about the the light spray and all that stuff. The the tricky thing is this uh private matter, Rob, I would. Not Rob, tell better Rob with the other Rob um. That's something that if. You can do what you want, I'm not giving you any kind of advice, but that strikes me as something that you might wanna consult an attorney with. Um but. Well, I think we're hopeful that the applicant will. Reach out to you and try to, you have some complicated issues um to deal with. But I think the the applicants, well hopefully, I think will intends to reach out to you and see if there's any way we can be creative and. Find a way to solve your problem, but you might want us to jump to the attorney.
Can we make this something as simple? As um. Both parties. Or the three parties involved. The town, the neighbor. And the applicant. Will investigate means. For access, if means exists. For access to that property.
It's something we can do.
Okay. That's fair.
Does, Rob, do you have any conditions we might wanna look into?
You know, um for a little bit of clarity for the board, um do you have access to the landscape plan? So we can just look at where the road is and we can see where the trees are gonna be planted on your side and how far apart they are, just so when they go up there, they can get an idea. Of where the landscape is, so.
These are twelve foot, right?
So it's quite a view.
In addition to the existing trees that are there.
Those are all the the dock circles are all new.
Yeah, so those looks, so these ones right here, those are um the green giants. Twelve foot minimum, there's twenty seven of them. Um between here and then there were some um additional. Ones added to the buffer at the one of the residence request.
So at least we can get an idea when we, well, in relation to the center of the road, we can see where uh. The planting is gonna take place, is that uh is that a berm in front, what what's that?
No, it's a swell.
That's a swell. And what's what's the swell picking up from?
Uh that is picking up stormwater runoff from the rear of some of the um left-hand houses. Um runoff in the grass over the septic field, that area there drains under a culvert under the street and today's left to right towards the wetland.
So the trees are probably in, would you say, from the road, uh twenty feet or so?
Uh fifteen twenty, I think.
Okay. So at least you guys can get an idea when you want to.
And and it would also pick up and runoff from Blackstone Street that happened to make its way onto the property.
There's no curving on that road, right?
No.
Anything else in the public?
Yes, looking at the plant, are they building the elevation or are they leaving it the way it is? Because it does go down. Are you bringing it up or are you leaving it the same elevation?
Um yeah, I it there's there's some fill involved, it's not a significant buildup. Um but the entrance does slope gently up, you're looking at like a like a two, the road's gonna be around. Two percent grade at that max, and so it's coming up just a little bit. And there is more fill towards the rear, but out by the street is um it is more or less staying the same. Um with some depressions due to build it to manage stormwater along that.
Thank you.
What's the ground uh what's the groundwater?
Um there there I think it's like somewhere around. Nine, ten feet down, it's it's very sandy, so it's all sand. What's that?
No modeling?
Not that I saw, um and and we did the septic testing already and that was witnessed by the board of health agent, so. Uh but groundwater is is fairly deep out there. No mounding required for the septic system at all.
Will we check if there's any comments on Zoom?
Any comments on Zoom? I don't see it.
Yeah, between eight to thirteen.
Uh we're in the back.
Hi, I'm Yvonne uh Mackey from uh Stephen Road in Boonham. I just, I'm not trying to muck up the water here, but I was listening to what the gentleman on Zoom said earlier. About um his tractor and the access to the field, his field, his agricultural land that he has there. I remember this gentleman and I don't know him, I remember him talking about this at least at two other meetings. Right off the bat, the beginning of one of the first meetings. Yeah, and the only comment I had to make on that, and it's just my two cents, is that. Um because it's agriculture land and the builders be getting given single uh variance or waiver or whatever to develop there. And it's agriculture land, this is agriculture land that this gentleman has accessed. Through ag- other agriculture land supposedly through a right of way. And I'm just wondering. Like if there couldn't be some way to, I know it's civil, everyone's saying it's a civil food or whatever, to work it out so he can drive his tractor in. You know what I'm saying? Because he was, I remember the first time he talked about it because I was standing over there and I remember. Um he was told, oh, probably something can be worked out, this was early on, you know.
Yes, ma'am, and we asked that the developer meet with the neighbors. And we tried to work through as many conditions as.
Oh, I know, I've been coming.
And you know, this was substantially larger. A a year ago.
I know.
And we've listened to the other neighbors. And it was sort of articulated. To the neighbors that, yeah, we we don't listen. And that couldn't be, that couldn't be further from the truth. This involves. National Heritage. Conservation Trust. And easements from an owner. That sold the property. So I, well, I wish I would love to do something. Our our hands are somewhat tied. Because we tried to. Get this as small as we can. And the other areas in the Conservation Trust and the National Trust. So we we couldn't accomplish everything. But we tried to minimize it over time as best we could. And we've gone from something that was substantially bigger. How do you wanna word the motion?
Well, uh I suggest that we um. Have, we ask that a decision be drafted and reviewed.
Whatever day we said.
Um for then continued to May ninth.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I just have to put in a plug, is there any chance we could get at the board's next meeting rather than. Just given the time that we've had here and the li- limited number of issues we have left, I don't know that it would be a substantial discussion.
To his point, we have a new hear, well, we have to figure this out, we have a new hearing. Um we also have three oh six. And we have um a warrant article petition. So those are the three things we have.
I do um. I I don't mind.
I don't, I mean, I don't mind either.
I don't mind doing it.
Uh I don't.
That's fine.
I don't mind.
Okay, so we'll put the twenty fifth, is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Okay, we can. We'll accommodate.
And we will, and we will get the stakes out, like you know.
The warrant article will be first, off the top of my head. And then we'll 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 look at it, we'll look at the agendas. And then we'll um. Look at some language back and forth.
If there's any way for you to reach out to the two neighbors, sort of deal with it privately, that would.
Much appreciated. And now you've been cooperative the whole time.
Yes.
One more question. When you're out there inspecting the entrance, can you see if the driveway actually can be angled somehow a different way so that. It kind of solves that issue?
Chair, I think any angling is only gonna actually create a problem, we don't think there's one now, but I think any angling of that driveway is gonna. Create a problem that isn't there now, that was. Pretty carefully selected that.
You intentionally put it there for a reason.
For sightlines and to to minimize or eliminate any chance of of headlight wear affecting properties, it's there for a reason.
And I believe they come the first, the the ninety degree. Access to the roads as a part.
Wait, we see something um. Rob, what what's your feeling? Uh Rob?
Are you asking my opinion on the angling of the driveway? I I actually agree with the applicant, I think that, you know, the location of the driveway, I think, is most likely. The best location for it, and when you start angling the driveway, then now you start having some issues with sight distances. The whole point of getting this this driveway staked is really just to verify that, yes, this is indeed. Not going to cause um issues with the houses across the street, so. I I I mean. I guess it's up to the the design engineer to to kind of come up with a solution for, you know, or basically they state whether or not the. The road um or the curb cut is is safe, but. I I think I agree with. The fact that, you know, keep, you want your driveway to come perpendicular to the road at all costs, otherwise you're gonna have issues with. Safety. So, um. That that's my opinion.
I I'm in agreement, I just wanted your your engineering expertise.
And the loop system's out of the question, the U is out of the question.
At this point in time, yes. Any other questions?
One one other thing, and I know Brian, to your point with other things, and I'm just bringing it up because I don't want it to come. Out at our next meeting in regards to like, we've had the renderings. And you guys wanted to make sure these look like um that they fit into the neighborhood. So is that something you might wanna see as like colors that they'll use, or are you guys okay with that? Or I just wanted to bring it up because I know we wanted renderings of different things in the past, but I'm not saying full-blown renderings. But are you thinking you might wanna look at colors or are you okay with that?
Do you have anything available right now?
We're gonna pull up what we previously submitted.
Definitely. Just to refresh the public. And the board.
Yeah, because that was helpful.
A fairly typical two-bedroom townhouses, um fabric siding. You know, nothing out of out of the ordinary.
What were you thinking for colors? Did you have any or not there, like were you thinking?
And then by assumption, the covenants? If it's a homeowners association?
Yes, these are, there'll be a homeowners association um that will govern, you know, the view and consistent view. Those can't, won't be able to just put up whatever color they want.
Okay. Now your pictures are coming up.
Yeah, yeah, these are all ownership units, they're not rentals, so the homeowners association that governs. The look, the landscaping, how the property is kept up, you know, in perpetuity.
You don't have a picture of the back of the, the back of them, do you?
Job sharing, so you're not.
Two-bedroom, yep.
Thanks for showing that.
We can't find it within the next minute, we can, we can bring in some additional architectural elements for next time.
Okay.
Okay.
So I uh.
Can you have a motion?
I already made the motion.
Wait a second. Did you get the motion?
To have a draft decision. For May ninth.
Yep, of course, there's not the the concerns he has.
Oh, that's right, we changed it to April twenty fifth, yes, yes, okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion made by Brian, seconded by Dennis, any discussion? Call for the vote.
Dennis side, Brian I.
Bill I.
Bill I.
Nick I.
A motion passed, you know. Uh we'll need a motion to continue this, what's the decision then, Mike?
We have it out till May.
Okay. During the next meeting?
Second, Nick.
We've motioned to continue this to the um next meeting on the twenty fifth of April. Any discussion?
Dennis. Dennis side, Brian I.
Bill I.
Bill I.
Nick I.
A motion passes, you know. I want to thank the public for attending. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, appreciate it. We have one more item. And the minutes weren't on our agenda because I didn't have them in time, just because the. Team has been slammed with meetings back to back, so I didn't put them on third approval for this time, so we're gonna do it for next time.
Okay, can you tell us what's going on with?
So, yes, Nadine. Is online. By Zoom.
Yes, hi, I'm here.
Yes.
Thank you for waiting patiently.
Are you welcome?
So um Nadine, if you wanna explain that's, or I can just give them a quick overview, but feel free to inform them what's happening.
Sure, um my name's Nadine Bailey, I'm with Mackey in Mackey, Norwood, Massachusetts, I represent GWL Direct. Um Maple three fifty-one to three fifty-three LLC. My client has requested I come here this evening to request a twenty-four month extension on four special permits that they received. Um for the record.
If I can interrupt for a second. So. Yeah, technically, so Mackey and Mackey's represented my family in the past. So I'm gonna recuse myself tonight on this on this. Piece of business.
Okay.
So. There there there's a legal relationship. There's a legal, that's, your company represented my my family. Years ago, so. I'm gonna recuse myself, and just for the record, thank you.
Sure.
I believe you've done that in the past. Yep, and uh there's there's a form on, I'm on record in the in the register's. Um office here, the town clerk has it in the file. Thank you, sorry for interrupting.
That's okay.
Didn't wanna go any further and jeopardize. Thank you.
No, I understand. Um so. Yes, on on four of them, they. Extension, sorry, yep, an extension on on the four different permits, they're set to expire. August fourth, twenty twenty-four, we're looking for a twenty-month permit extension that would bring the um new expiration date. August fourth, twenty twenty-six.
For all four?
For all four, do, would you like me to read them off, Mr. Chairman?
All right, Amy, do you know, do you know all four?
Uh we have them in her letter that she provided, yes, yes.
Of course.
Of course. What, what was the, what's the, uh, what's the word? The reason for the construction not commencing?
So they have a tenant presently that they're, they would like to keep. And the, they're having discussions about whether or not they wanna fill the entire, what will be the addition. And the tenant has multi-layers of corporate decision-makers, as does my client. And so to be able to, to negotiate going back and forth, it's been very strenuous.
It, it was approved a year ago?
You had extended it.
I extend.
We extended it, yes.
Yes.
And it expires in August.
Right.
And they're requesting now to push it out further.
I don't know if the applicant is aware of, uh, the proposed zoning change that's coming.
Yes.
Yes, I am aware of it.
Okay.
But that wouldn't be retroactive, correct? I mean.
I, I, I think it's, could be problematic for you.
Okay.
It was extended already for one more.
Uh, they had, they're on an extension now.
It's to expire in August of this year, August eighth, I believe, of twenty.
August, August fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
So they already went through.
You guys had a, you had agreed to that last go-around, yes.
Right, but they had. How many, how many years do you need before you get an extension?
Um, your site, uh, your site approval, I believe, is two years.
Two years.
So then, it's been three years. Yeah, so you gave him a one-year extension?
We did.
Yeah.
See what the problem is, giving them another extension.
I would, I, I would be inclined to give them a, a year extension. I think that we've already extended it once, said it again. If you, you can't do it another year, come back in a year, we can talk about it again, but I think we like to keep, historically keep um, extensions on a shorter timeframe, you know, a longer timeframe.
Okay.
To cut to the chase. I have nothing to add.
What's the downside for two years, Brian?
I think that we'd like to, just in the past, we've always wanted to keep people coming back, so we don't have these projects just sitting there doing nothing. Then we keep our finger on the pulse to know.
That's right. Any other comments?
I'm up.
I'll leave.
I have a comment on, um, and I'm not sure about this, whereas the current one is until it's August fourth. So are we? That's, I just want clarity on.
Not a year from tonight.
Exactly, that's what I wanna clarify on.
Four, twenty-five.
Okay.
Not a year.
Right.
Your, does the applicant agree?
Nadine, is that what you were speaking, okay.
Oh, yeah, if, I mean, if, if the board doesn't wanna give us two years, I, I understand, and I understand your position, and we'll do whatever the board would like, um, but if it's a year that we can get, um, you know, that's what we, that's what we get.
A year for the deadline, not, not a year from tonight, to clarify.
Oh, yeah, not, yes, I'm sorry, a, a year from the deadline.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
No.
Yeah.
I have a second, Nick.
Downside. Stretching? No. And inside.
Brian, I.
Go on.
Nick, I.
Motion passes, you know.
So Nadine, I'll put it in a letter to you tomorrow. You'll have that, and I'll get it time stamped, so you have that.
Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you for waiting.
Okay, you're welcome. All right, bye-bye.
Motion to adjourn?
Second, Dennis, I. Brian.
Go on.
Go on. Nick, I.
Motion passes, you know.